Are you ready to start?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting, Board of Directive, Monterey Water Management District, for Thursday, October 29th, 2020. The time is 5:36. Roll call, please.
Director Byrne.
Here.
Director Riley.
Here.
Director Evans.
Here.
Director Hoffman.
Yeah.
Director Adams.
Here.
Director Potter. Director Edwards.
Here. Thank you. Okay, will we all please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Arlene, are you ready to start?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'd like to call to order the corrections to the special meeting.
Yes. There will be a change in the staff recommendation on the last item.
The time is 5:36. Roll call, okay.
Director Byrne.
Here.
Director Riley.
Here.
Next item.
Director Evans.
Here.
Will be oral communication. Anyone wish?
Yeah.
Director Adams.
Assistant Board.
Here.
Anyone who's on matters not listed on the agenda that are within the preview of the district may do so during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all items presented to the board. Oral communication is open. I pledge allegiance.
And please note the Director Potter is behind us.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anna Thompson, Carmel. A couple days ago at the Monterey One Water Meeting, we learned that the Pure Water Monterey Project is progressing very well, meeting all expectations and no problems in sight. My thanks and congratulations to all parties involved in making this state-of-the-art project a reality. It is estimated that by the end of next year, the system will have produced enough water annually to stop the illegal overdraft drafting of the Carmel River. We're not, we're not know that the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project is both feasible and will provide the additional water needed to lift the CDR and to allow for growth and development. This project is cost-effective, environmentally friendly, and ready to be developed. There is no good reason to hold this project back. But CalAM and its supporters refuse to endorse this project, making all kinds of false claims. One of the claims I have heard frequently is that the disalt plant will provide the third leg to a three-legged water supply stool. Well, the salt plant might become a third leg, assuming it can be built, but it would definitely be an oversized and very expensive leg that is a poor fit forcing red payers to pay for water whether or not it is used. There are much better solutions to consider if ever became necessary. But regardless of what our future needs will be, it does not make any sense to me that anyone would choose to discard into the ocean 2,250 acre feet of water year after year when this water can be recovered and recycled. That this is a waste of money and resources that we cannot afford. Unfortunately, CalAM is a for-profit corporation, and CalAM's objective is to maximize profits while letting the red payers assume all costs, risks, and liabilities. CalAM's size profit interest conflicts with our public's best interest. They will always pursue water supply solutions that will give them the highest profit for the longest time. In the 2019 annual report of the American Water Works, CalAM's parent company, it is stated that we achieved, quote, "We achieved a five-year total shareholder return of 155% compared with the S&amp;P 500's five-year total return of 74%. We believe that delivering on results, combined with our strong earnings growth and superior dividend growth expectations, provides excellent value for our investor." I wonder, what kind of value is providing for the red payers? Is this the company that we wanted to have to control the future of our water? In my opinion, no profit-driven monopoly should have the power to decide.
Your time is up, three minutes.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say it should not have the power to decide water policy impacting the general public.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
Chair Edward, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. Oral communication is now closed. Okay, General Manager, first action item. Your mic is muted.
This was supposed to be on the consent agenda last regular meeting, and we outfoxed ourselves and took it off the consent and forgot to make it action. So this would formalize the resolution that was read at the last board meeting.
Okay, let me take it out to the public. Any comments from the public?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Would either you or the General Manager provide a small recap of the resolution so that both the directors and the public understand what it is that we're discussing?
Okay.
Thank you.
Correct. This is a resolution of appreciation for 11 years of commitment to the water management district from former Director Bob Brower. Highlighted his love in the formation of the Water Supply Planning Committee, which he chaired for his duration. Highlighted his affability and collegiality in working with other directors on the board, as well as some of the other commitments he made to the water supply planning process. I also note that last week's Pine Cone and last week's Weekly did run a formal obituary submitted by his family, so I direct people to go back and look at those.
Thank you, General Manager. Anyone in the public wants to comment on this item?
Gary Curcio, please present your comments.
Yes, so thank you, Board, and thank you to the staff for putting this measure forward. Bob Brower was a true hospitality professional and a big friend of hospitality, a big supporter of Monterey County Hospitality Association, and a past hospitality professional of the year. He was way ahead of the curve on some of these water solutions, talking about aquifer storage years and years ago. Did a terrific job. He was not only a fine hospitality professional, but a great, great asset to this water board. And we strongly urge that the directors accept the staff recommendation and approve this commendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anna Thompson, your hand is still raised. Did you want to speak under this comment on this item? All right, I see no other raised hands. Chair Edwards.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption.
Chair, I second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Director Potter and second by Director Evans. Discussion, comments? Sorry, by Chair, I know you wanted to make that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Director Adams.
I just, I just want to.
Go ahead, by Chair.
I I just want to say how much Bob has missed on this board. He was certainly moved projects forward. He was innovative, and he was just a pleasure to work with.
All right, any other comments?
And Mr. Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't comment, since Bob was a very good friend of mine. You know, I've known Bob for many, many years. I'd known him well before he was on the Water Management District. And I was a little bit, to be honest, a little skeptical when he joined because I didn't know the level of passion and commitment he had. Well, he sure proved me wrong. I mean, honestly, as Dave Stolt noted very accurately, and so did Gary Curcio, this man really got involved. He really cared. He was articulate. He was a professional. I'll miss him dearly. I'll miss that glass of wine before the meeting, so I'll miss the glass after. Bob, you are the best man.
Any other comment?
Chair, this is Director Evans.
Director Evans.
I echo all the comments that have been said before. Bob, when I came on the water board, he took me under his wing, and he talked to me and guided me and was a great mentor and friend. And likewise, I will miss him greatly. And I do, I do long for the days of that glass of wine before meetings. So may he rest in peace and thank him for all the efforts that he did for this district and for this meeting.
All right, thank you, Director Evans. Arlene, I can hear you type.
Someone is typing very loudly. At any rate, I just wanted to say, as I think I have mentioned before, that Bob and I did not always agree. But we had the opportunity to drop together to Washington where we became fast friends. And I, even though it was clear that even though we disagreed on issues, we had respect for one another, which was really terrific. But I appreciate all the comments that my colleagues have said, and I know that he was well regarded in our community, and his legacy will live for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Riley.
Well, I wasn't on the board with him, but I was always in the audience when he was running the Supply Committee. I just thought he was very gracious about everybody making comments and making sure it was an open, open, open mic for everybody. And he just, he just made it easy for people to participate, and he was very gracious. I just appreciate his style very much.
Thank you. Director Hoffman, you have any comments?
No, Chair, not.
All right, thank you. Just a final word for me. I'm going to miss him. I was glad to see him when we got Pure Water Monterey going. Out at that open house. It made me feel good. He was looking good. He was looking great, and he would smile walking around there because he was happy to see that. But I'm going to miss him too. I'm going to miss him too. So on that, we'll have roll call vote.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Hoffman.
Yes.
Director Riley.
Yes.
Director Byrne.
Yes.
Director Potter.
Aye.
Director Evans.
Aye.
And Director Edwards.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right, General Manager, public hearings. How many people we have out there tonight? General Manager, you're on mute again.
I know. We have forty, forty attendees. I would say less than ten are just observers, so they may be folks who came with the intention of speaking.
Okay, Board. I'm going to give them three minutes each. They waited on us. Now they can take four, say, of three minutes, so I'm just letting you know what's up. So there'll be three minutes, Arlene, for the public comments on these items.
Thank you.
What is the first public hearing?
So the first public hearing is the Consider Certification of the Final EIR for the Potential Acquisition of the Monterey Water System and District Boundary Adjustment. We have a very brief presentation here. Next slide. Okay, so the purpose of the EIR is to satisfy sequel requirements for LAFCO. It doesn't mean that we had to do an EIR. We chose to do an EIR for completeness and also to forestall potential litigation later in the process. Additionally, Arlene, normally, when it's just a simple change in ownership with no change in operations, you would not require an EIR, but the CalAM satellite systems created a slight wrinkle where we perceived that there may be some environmental impacts. Let's stay on this bullet for a second. I do want to stress the no change in operations. And just for clarity, our plan is no operational changes. And the operation plans that you'll hear in the next agenda item are basically living documents that are not, that may be subject to change. And that anything that appears to suggest a change in operations is unintended and driven by our lack of knowledge of current operations. So we will be going back into the operations plans and attempting to identify anything that suggests an immediate change in operations because that is not our intent. Our intent is a simple change in ownership with no change in operations that would normally not require an EIR. But in the case of the Monterey system, we do have the five satellite water systems and the wastewater systems that are not subject to our jurisdiction for condemnation. Next slide, Arlene. So this is the water system that we're talking about. It's the yellow area, which is the CalAM main system, green, which is Ryan Ranch, red, which is Hidden Hills. I'm sorry, purple is Ryan Ranch and green is Bishop. And then the other satellites that you see there in light blue are what I was referring to that are outside of the jurisdiction and not subject to any condemnation action. Next slide. And again. So the key findings regarding acquisition is that the proposed project could would generate greenhouse gas emissions that may have a significant impact. So the mitigation that's suggested is commit to net zero, i.e. carbon neutral over the operational life of the project. And because the project would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts, the findings do not include a statement of overriding considerations. With respect to annexation, what you see here are blown-up pieces of the map. The Yankee Point parcels. The red line is the district boundary. The blue line is the CalAM service territory. And you can see that on that little horseshoe bend of a portion of Yankee Point, there are several parcels that are outside of the district's service area. On the right-hand side, the district boundary on the red line is Lorellis Grade. And the parcels to the east of Lorellis Grade that you would see identified here with the blue border are outside of our jurisdiction, but part of the CalAM main system or Hidden Hills system. Next slide. All told, by the way, all told, those annexed parcels, it's a little over fifty parcels, fifty-six, but less than thirty-five, I believe. It's like thirty-three connections. So the key findings regarding annexation was that there's no real environmental impacts. Moving on to alternatives. There was an alternative analysis. The EIR evaluated a reasonable range of alternatives to the project-described draft EIR. And those alternatives were, one, a no-project alternative, two, no-boundary adjustment alternative, three, private third-party operator. The base case is integrated operations where we assume that all of the, or majority of the current CalAM employees are hired and operate the system in a consistent manner with how they operate today. Fourth alternative is no boundary adjustment and the third-party operator. None of these project alternatives were felt to be more desirable than the proposed project with consideration to environmental effects, project objectives, and other factors. And the project objectives included a number of the goals or the aspirational statements made in the Measure J process. Next slide. So the recommendation, we are recommending to the board that you approve Resolution 2020-17, certifying the potential acquisition of Monterey Water System and District Boundary Adjustment, final environmental impact report, including the findings attached thereto. Second, approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, provided, contained as an exhibit for the findings. And finally, direct staff to file a notice of determination of compliance with the State Office of Planning and Research. And with that, we do have one of the principals on the project available as a panelist, and then two of her colleagues are available if need be as participants, and we can loop them in.
Thank you, General Manager. More questions?
Chair Edwards, this is Director Evans. I do have some questions.
Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you. Couple of, couple of, there, so there are some statements in here that I didn't quite understand, and I would like some clarity. And I'll give you time to find it, but it was on page six. Um, and I'll give you time to find it, but it was on page six dash eighteen of the, um, document that we have.
Um, when I say the doc, you mean the?
The bound spiral.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good.
Uh, so I'll read it. Um, it has, it's in the middle of the paragraph, um, and it starts with respect to the project objectives. And the question that I have is about halfway through the paragraph. It says, however, alternative two, which if I remember correctly, is the, um, not annexing the parcels, not changing the boundaries? And please tell me if I'm misunderstanding that.
Yeah, I've got, uh, slowness in getting to the page.
Yeah, it was with the no boundary adjustment. Proposed acquisition of the Monterey Water Supply by the district would perceive that the application to annex areas would not be approved by Lafco.
Okay, so that's, that's what I thought. So, um, it states, so it says, however, alternative two would meet the following objectives for citizens outside the district boundaries, provide greater transparency and accountability to residents and businesses on the Monterey Peninsula regarding potable water supplies, as well as increased customer service and reliability, enhance customer service and responsiveness to affected Cal-Am customers, and provide greater local control over the rate-setting process and rate increases. My question on that sentence is that it makes it sound like alternative two, which is the non-annexation of those parcels. It makes it sound that if they're not annexed, then they will have greater local control over rate-setting and greater transparency and accountability. So I just was not sure that that was a correct statement, and so I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, I can clarify that. Um, this is Megan Jones. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I started my video. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but. Um, yeah, so alternative two assumes that for some reason maybe Lafco would deny the boundary adjustment, so that there would not be a boundary adjustment. Um, however, that alternative, those connections would still be acquired. They would just be serviced under a contract agreement. So it would be a different situation contractually, but they would still be essentially serviced. Um, so for that reason, it meets most of the same objectives as the proposed project. And in that statement, it's really just meant to summarize what objectives that alternative would meet. Um, it doesn't seem to us that it meets them to a greater extent than the proposed project.
I got it. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification greatly. That, that, now I understand, um, what the. Um, I, yeah, I have another question. Um, and it has to do in the, um.
Could I just say, then I had a question on that same page.
Oh, sure.
Under alternative three, in the last paragraph, um, on the same page, it says, further, employees would be domiciled locally. How did you come up with that determination? Because that is probably not very likely.
Yeah, so what they would do is, um, send in a project manager probably from, uh, you know, national location. Um, they would make a concerted effort to hire existing Cal-Am employees, but for positions, you know, if there's a significant number of positions that aren't hired, they would recruit. But, um, the term of the, uh, management agreement would be such that those employees that they hire would end up being domiciled locally. And that includes Salinas and, you know, other locales where people on the peninsula currently work. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean one of the six peninsula cities, but, yeah, there, I mean, this is the, uh, the model put forth by the third-party operator that we had developed the operations plan. Um, and they're pretty consistent with the three or four largest operators out there.
Well, that statement shows up under transportation as well, indicating that somehow they would be domiciled on the peninsula, which would decrease traffic on Highway sixty-eight and one oh one, and so I, I don't see any evidence that this is a true statement.
Yeah, Megan, do you have anything on whether, uh, it was intended to state that they're actually on the peninsula or they're in the same kind of commuter, commute shed as our existing, uh, employer, employees are?
Megan, you're on.
I'm going to unmute you, Megan. Megan, I'll let you unmute yourself.
It looks like she's having internet connect, connect issues as well.
Oh, that could be. All right. I'm going to try one more time to unmute you, Megan. So I'll try it on my end. Yeah.
Is she left out of the first question?
Why she's looking at that? That same statement shows up under transportation, um, indicating that there would be less traffic, but I don't think this statement backs that up.
Well, I think it's, that it's similar to the proposed project, so similar number of employees, similar location of employees, similar commute distance. I mean, that's, that's what, what's being implied by this. I don't know, Arlene, if you can move, move Ashley Quackenbush over to a panelist for.
Sure.
Ashley, I've unmuted you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you. Um, can you repeat the question? Just because I was having some issues trying to raise my flag hand and trying to figure this out, so.
Yeah, so Ashley, it's, um, discussing third-party operations. And, um, the statement is that employees would be domiciled locally. So as a result, the impacts would be similar to the proposed project. And Director Byrne is, uh, challenging whether that really means that, um, there's no difference. You know, I think our, our assumption was that the, uh, employees would reside in similar locations and have similar commutes than current employees. And that was the implication, but I know you worked on the, the vehicle miles and GHD stuff, so, um, perhaps you can.
Yeah, well, you pretty much have it exactly right there. Yeah, there, um, we assume that it's, um, not a change from the current, um, current situation, and that it would be a similar workforce would be employed, which means that the commute distances, um, and types would be similar.
That's hard because this is Megan, just sorry we went back. I had some activities, I had to leave and come back, but hopefully it's working now. Uh, but yeah, the assumption is there would be no change and, you know, we didn't, as I recall, the local very specifically, but it, you know, Salinas, it's obviously just.
Chair, did that answer your question? Could we go back to Director Evans so she can have her second question? Okay, uh, Director Evans, what was your next question?
Thank you, Chair. That's to do on page three dash eight. It is in the list of cumulative projects. So I'm looking at Monterey's, the city of Monterey's cumulative projects that were listed. And, um, there are three that are listed, but, um, I think there are more that are, are in the works or that should have been included in this list. And while I am not on city council and I'm not as plugged into their decisions, um, I don't know all of the projects. But, um, I noticed that the, uh, Garden Road redevelopment was not listed on here, and I think that, um, I, as we decided as a board a few months ago to, uh, try to allocate some water to that project, that will probably move forward. And so I'm not sure that all of the projects that could have cumulative impacts would, would, are listed on this page. And so I, I ask, uh, I just asked the question, are there other projects or what if there are other projects where they looked at and disregarded or not looked at at all?
Right. Sorry, Megan.
Megan, you want to take this? Just, let's talk just kind of at the high level about cumulative impacts. And by the way, you did see the, uh, errata sheet that was sent out yesterday evening on Pacific Grove Project. So similar, similar type of question, and I think you'll find a similar answer, but Megan, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, the cumulative list is really not intended to be exhaustive. I think if we included, you know, every small development project in the region, it would be a very, very exhaustive list. We tried to pull together, obviously, the water supply, you know, relevant projects, and most of the larger projects. And this was based on, you know, start experience working in the area, contact with various agencies. Um, so because it's not exhaustive, obviously, there were some that were missed, and we did get the, the comment about the Pacific Grove ones, and so kind of goes in. I think, you know, from a perspective of how this was analyzed in CEQA, we did not do exhaustive, um, water demand analysis, you know, because the, that discussion is fairly general. Um, so adding even smaller projects, larger projects to the list at this point would not modify the analysis. Um, it doesn't really play into the impact of the project in terms of the environment. Um, but hopefully that answers your question. If you have follow-up.
Well, it seems like these projects, if you keep adding them in, especially ones that we are aware of, there is going to be a water demand component on this, which, um, is a lot of what this document is looking at, is that, you know, under a change of ownership, you know, yeah, everything's the same, but there's also sections in here where you're looking at the, the growth, future growth. And so I think that that deserves, um, some attention.
Yeah, I didn't really suggest that we, you know, didn't analyze it at all, but, um, in the sections where we look at water supply, you'll see that we discussed, you know, first we look at project-specific impacts, and at the end of the section, we talked about cumulative. Um, and on the project-specific, you know, this project is really just a change in ownership. It's not going to result in increased demand or increased water supplies. Um, we acknowledge that reduced rates could result in some increases, but that's speculative to quantify, but ultimately fall back on existing regulations in the area that limit the overall water supply or water demand, you know, that could be provided. Uh, so those cumulative projects, as they hit together, those same limits apply to those. Um, so because ultimately the project doesn't increase demand, you know, if there was a very large cumulative impact in water supply, the project's attribution to that would not be considered considerable.
Yeah, one of the key considerations are, is it's our project in combination with some of these other projects, will that create cumulative impacts? And so, because our, our project doesn't have an impact in and of itself on water demand, its combination with any others, uh, the cumulative impacts really, uh, come from the others, not from the, uh, change in ownership or the annexation. So, you know, the project being analyzed here does not have a, uh, you know, a cumulative impact or an additive cumulative impact to any of the other projects.
Okay, thank you both for the clarification.
Arlene, and then Director Adams. Go ahead, Director Rowley.
Um, I, uh, I saw that the greenhouse gas emissions was the only environmentally, uh, only environmental topic that had some implications on this. And I assume it was a general statement about the two issues. One is the commute patterns that may or may not create some new greenhouse gas emissions. But also the fact that you're not traveling to two areas outside of the normal district boundaries. And so as you go to a little wider net of, of transportation requirements, I assume that those are the two issues largely, uh, accounting for the greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, I, I'm just asking for confirmation and do I have that approximately right?
Yeah, that's, that's about right. There's a couple of, of things there. One is that because there's all these satellite systems that Cal-Am currently operates, not all of them would be incorporated in this project, so Cal-Am would continue to service some of them. So there's an acknowledgement that there would be sort of a, a double dipping, if you will, um, inefficiency there of having trips go to some satellites and then someone else servicing the others. So we account for that. And then we also look at the employee count total, so the district's, um, populations of the employees they would need, it would essentially be a net increase of six for the district. And then we also make a conservative assumption that Cal-Am would need to hire additional employees to service those satellites, and we assume that would also be six. So there's no total employees plus that sort of double dipping concept. So those are sort of the two things, and then totally the vehicle emission that was holding greenhouse gas.
Adams, do you have some questions? Uh, uh, one or two questions?
Were you talking to me?
Yes.
I had a question, but it was answered during the discussion around Molly's question, so I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Director Potter, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine at the moment.
Okay, Director Hoffman, you have a floor?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Um, Megan, um, going back to the traffic aspect, um, you made a statement that, um, you assumed that the new employees would have the same commutes as the Cal-Am ones. Did you actually investigate where the Cal-Am folks actually live to validate your assumptions?
We were unable to do that. We, we don't have that information. We don't have, you know, the list of employees, Cal-Am employees. The assumption for the project is that, you know, the district would hire those same employees, so they wouldn't be moving as a result of this project.
Uh, but, but part of the analysis was additional employees and an assumption that there would be no additional commute times, assuming that new employees would live in the same locations on the peninsula, in the peninsula communities, that, um, existing folks do. And so, um, if you can't validate where our existing employees live, how can you make that determination?
Yeah, we did make conservative assumptions for the length of that commute, and if, um, I'm allowed a minute, I can dig into that section to find that, um, specific detail.
The reason why I mention this is because one of the big issues is that there's no housing on the peninsula. And so the availability of housing and bringing people in is really, um, not viable. And so clearly, new employees would likely live, um, Salinas Marina, uh, where there is housing being built or exists, or uh, Greenfield or whatever. So, yeah, just, I don't see the validation through your assumptions.
Yeah, so I, I find the specific assumption in the, um, in the document that could provide a conservative estimate, who assumes that all employees needed twenty-five miles one way basically between Salinas and Pacific Grove. So it assumes that everybody lives in Salinas, um, which, you know, being a peninsula, rest of the population is reasonable, but also.
Hoffman, you have, have any more questions? You're on mute. Do what, Director Hoffman?
No, I said, I'm, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, okay, uh, GM, uh, did the EIR go out to the cities?
Uh, yeah, um, pretty, pretty wide distribution. Megan can probably speak to that more, but they've got a, a substantial list. So every, uh, every local jurisdiction, and then there are some, uh, non-local jurisdictions who have specific interests and activities on the peninsula. Um, but Megan, you want to speak to the distribution?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we did have a very lengthy distribution list. I would have over five or six hundred emails that went out, but all the speaks that were on there.
Okay, and they had time to comment on this, right? Like for these projects?
Yeah, so there were two, two comment opportunities. One was, uh, after the release of the draft EIR, there was a forty-five day comment period. Um, and the comment letters are appended in here, uh, in the file that you can see towards the, the backend. Um, and then we did our best to get this out on the street, notifying our listserv, um, of the revised file being posted, uh, you know, a week before our board meeting. Um, so if there were any, you know, late-breaking things where people noticed when they read it, we, we would have heard about it or we'll hear about it tonight.
Okay, my next question is, uh, what is that EIR when, when the city asks for water? That if we get water, what is that? That if we get water, what is that EIR that's going to have to be done?
Yeah, so you're referring to allocation EIR.
Yes.
The district council and I and the water demand manager are not yet all of one like mind on what's required for that. Um, but we've also kind of set our start point is when there's an approved project, that that should give us enough time. And we're still trying to figure out what that approved project's going to be.
Okay, and one of my last questions is, could we have done this under a negative, negative?
Well, as I mentioned ear- earlier, um, the, there's a good, strong body of law that says just a simple change in ownership is not subject to Sequo at all. Um, so we could have filed a notice of exemption, I believe. Dave, you can step in and correct me if, if need be. But out of an abundance of caution and recognizing that there could be these, uh, GHG, uh, impacts as a result of vehicle miles being duplicated, uh, we decided to go down the path, a little more expensive and definitely a much lengthier process. But, you know, that's where we, that's where we ended up.
Um, if I may, uh, yes, an argument can be made that this is not a project, and therefore a notice of exemption could have been filed. An argument could be made that this is categorically exempt, and therefore we could have gone through an, an exemption there, uh, or that, uh, that we could have done this as a negative declaration. Uh, we felt that given the, uh, intensity of scrutiny, that, that the best way to do this would be by doing the full EIR, because the extra time that could be saved by going through a shortcut would be eaten up if there was a challenge. And we felt that this would be the best way to have the most transparency to, to do it through the EIR process. And also, ultimately, we're going before other bodies, including, uh, the, uh, LAFCO. And if LAFCO disagreed and wanted an EIR, that would cause a further delay. So, uh, this is the, uh, this is the gold standard, and we felt that that is the best path to proceed and, and ultimately the most timely path.
Okay, I see Director Adams have a hand up. Go ahead Director Adams.
Thank you very much. So I guess my question then could be for Mr. Laredo. But so, um, number one, by certifying the document, will we have everything needed to file the LAFCO app, app, application?
I believe we will be prepared to proceed with the filing and requesting the processing. Uh, they, they will be seeking this next item, which is to have what our draft, uh, operations plan is, uh, and that will be to be submitted to them as well. But we will be able to, with the certification of the EIR, we will be able to file the application and put together the materials and set this for hearing.
So we have everything we need then?
That's correct.
Okay, so then my second question to you is, if, if, if a Sequo suit is filed against us, how much time do you think it would take to resolve?
Well, litigation can be extensive. It depends on whether we try to, uh, resolve at the trial level or if it would go on appeal. Uh, uh, at, at the trial level, typically a matter of this type takes between six months and a year. And if it goes on appeal, you can add another 18 months to that.
And if, if instead we were to recirculate another EIR, would that be, um, a quicker process?
Well, uh, if you were to recirculate, there's no guarantee that that would not be challenged.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much.
And on that topic, just so everyone understands, the eminent domain attorneys, uh, pretty much 100% recommend that we have all environmental approvals done on the acquisition and the annexation before even, uh, having a hearing on public necessity. Uh, LAFCO did ask the question, uh, you know, could the LAFCO process wait until after you decide that you're moving forward, uh, with a, uh, resolution of public necessity? So those two are kind of in conflict with each other, um, in that I think LAFCO doesn't want to be either starting something and then having it held up due to a Sequo challenge, number one, or starting something and then being, uh, the, the venue for a, a conflict, um, which it could be as well. So, um, I think they wanted the decks a little more clear, um, but the attorneys are recommending against that. And so I think because to get your LAFCO approval or both activate, activation of latent powers as well as the annexation, we do have to have a sequer document, and so, um, wrapping this up is, is the best course of, of action.
Okay, if there's not any more board questions, we're going to open it up to the public for public comment, and they have three minutes each. Thank you. Open it up for public, public comment is open, darling.
All right, just a moment. Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Uh, I'm not, I don't have my hand raised.
Um, all right, thank you Anna. Rick Hoyer, please present your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Rick Hoyer, President of Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association. Stated goal of the entire process is to reduce water rates. An additional thing, by changing to public ownership versus private tiered rates would go away, is my understanding. Both of those, there's an accepted, uh, economic term that's used in multiple, uh, natural resource issues called the rebound effect. Basically, when rates go down, use goes up. One of the major things that's helped restrict use on the peninsula has been the tiered rates. The EIR totals is the potential for increased water rates, which will increase demand. Increased demand will then in itself bring into question the entire demand study and the effect. Where is that additional water going to come from? What are potential sources for the additional water to meet that demand? And what are the impacts of the peninsula on the environment? None of this is explored in here. It's been dismissed as quote-unquote speculative, so therefore it cannot be viewed. The fact that demand will go up as a result of lower rates is speculative. By how much maybe, it'll go up as a result, water demand will go up. None of that is analyzed in this EIR to any effect, and therefore makes the entire EIR fatally.
Kevin Dayton, please present your comment.
Yes, thank you, Kevin Dayton, Government of Thursday, Hazan, Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. Uh, first, uh, I have to say from a business community point of view, I understand why you had this environmental impact report coming. It's a real shame the California Environmental Quality Act has turned into, and now you're at the point where you're having a change of ownership and you're having to do a full-fledged EIR. It's, uh, it's ridiculous, setting a bad precedent. We're going to have a day where every time a property is changed, there's going to have to be some sort of environmental review. Uh, so actually, I think that, uh, some of the interpretations saying you didn't need to do this because it wasn't a project makes some sense. And, uh, once again, I understand why you're going this way, but, uh, this is, uh, this is a bad precedent for the future in California. We're getting so burdened with, uh, environmental review to do anything. Uh, regarding the EIR itself, uh, I, I agree with, um, Board Member Evans. Uh, that, uh, list of, uh, proposed projects is missing a lot. And you point out it's not exhaustive, but, uh, you know what? There's some big stuff there that's been, uh, controversial that wasn't mentioned. There's not, there's no mention there of the regional housing needs allocation and other really key issues related to the future of the Monterey Peninsula region that relate to housing and the issue of water supply. Uh, your current and projected water supplies chart table 4.6, uh, that's one. Uh, you know, those numbers, as you admit elsewhere in the, uh, EIR, uh, not really accurate. You know, look for, just for example, at the expected water from the San City desalination plant. Also, of course, it's been mentioned before, uh, you, all this is going to ultimately be decided by your board directors through future policies. So, yeah, there's some speculation here. Uh, you do get to the question of, are the prices of water really going to go down if this change of ownership occurs? And if it does, how will that affect development? And how will the agency try to balance out the supposed decline in, in cost of water while still controlling development? Which is really behind the scenes, one of the reasons why this is being pushed in the first place to control and restrain development activity. Uh, I think this whole concept has a lot of problems. The Chamber of Commerce continues to, uh, have, uh, great reservations about this particular idea of the public takeover of the private water supply.
George Sonis, please present your comment.
Uh, thank you, um, I'm counsel for CalAmp. Uh, our detailed comments to the EIR were submitted in a letter on July 31 and in a letter delivered yesterday, want to amplify a couple of things and add a couple of things that were in those letters. Two weeks ago, on October 15, after the final EIR was prepared, the district unveiled for the first time proposed operations plan for the Monterey Water System. It's a 143-page document prepared by outside consultant groups. The operations plan is inconsistent with the EIR, but should have been reviewed and evaluated in the EIR. Uh, as Mr. Stoltz said at the outset, EIR proposes no changes whatsoever in the operations of the water system. That is stated in the EIR repeatedly. But this operations plan makes numerous changes to the operations, two of which were noted in my letter yesterday. Some of the changes require new or expanded water facility, installation of which could cause environmental impact. So the plan is on its face inconsistent with the no-changes project that's been evaluated in the EIR. Second point I want to make is that, um, the EIR is defective because it fails to evaluate the impacts of the takeover project on water supply. It states in, uh, that the overall cost of water will be less in the future and all likelihood substantially less. But as noted earlier by prior speaker, uh, this was a, this was dismissed as too speculative to evaluate, uh, to evaluate this change in cost on the, um, water, uh, demand for water. Uh, but you know what the change in cost is because you're going to submit a report from Raffelis that reports to quantify that and says there will be, quote, "significant annual reductions in revenue requirements and projected monthly water bills." You know that there's a lax consistency of demand, and you could ease, you could do that study to, uh, uh, to, to determine what the likely increase in water usage is going to be. Further, the EIR says, "Well, water rate setting is exempt from Sequo." Well, that may be, but that only highlights the need to study, uh, this change of rates in your EIR. Finally, um, it, the EIR fails to, uh, account for the environmental impact arising from the district's plan concerning the Monterey water supply. The board sent a letter on June 15, 2020, to the Postwood Commission, urging it to deny the permit to construct that desalination plant that's being proposed by CalAmp. But the EIR presumes that the plan is going to come online. Uh, that is completely inconsistent with the district's plan. I asked that letter since the Postwood Commission dated June 15, 2020, being made part of this administrative record. The board needs to be clear, we believe, that what its plans are with respect to that desalination plant and not presenting the EIR as inconsistent.
Sir, sir, your time is up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Caller, please present your men, uh, your comment, and please identify yourself when you make your comment.
Yes, good evening, Tom Rowley. I happen to be Vice President of Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association, but I'm not making a statement for the organization tonight. I did want to alert you for at least the second meeting in a row. The viewing the live webcast on the accessmediaproductions.org will not work, uh, whether it's air and programming, but this is the second time it's been in your agenda, and unable to make a connection. And, uh, so I just wanted to alert you that your advertising is false along that regard. It is kind of a pain in the butt to just listen and not be able to see all the cast of characters in action, especially your general manager and, uh, counsel, who are always very entertaining. It was somewhat entertaining to hear, uh, Mr. Laredo say this is the gold standard, this EIR. Uh, it hardly is. One example I'll give you, this is not a simple process like, you know, turning, signing, and sending in a pink slip for your car. You're not just changing the driver, you're changing the whole bureaucracy of an organization, of a company that is peninsula-wide. This is not simple in any way, shape, or form. For example, the discussion about greenhouse gases. When you call to change a water account or report a, a water emergency, you are calling an 800 number where the, uh, the operator that receives the call or the telephone operator is either in Alton, Illinois, someplace in Florida, someplace that is a subsidiary of American Water Company, which CalAmp belongs to. There is no greenhouse gas impact from that employee in Alton, Illinois or wherever that employee is, and not knowing where the existing employees live. The other thing is, it's in, in the operation plans, I believe it says, "We'll replace the existing, uh, staff with six more additional, uh, water management district employees to take over a water company is complex." This is just ridiculous on its face. Uh, the analysis is clearly not, uh, effective, not efficient, and not comprehensive. And the operation plans, as pointed out by the, uh, CalAmp attorney, should have been one combined, uh, EIR on the potential acquisition. The acquisition, if you say it's going to be simple, and then you have operating plan, whether it's self-run by the district or on contract, is no way a, not a complex bureaucratic change to have this ownership. It's just simply the whole scope of the document is out of whack. That's the only way to describe it. And believe me, I've read a lot of Sequel documents, and I know Mr. Potter has, and I have to believe he would come to the same conclusion after reading the staff report for item two and item three this evening.
Sir, sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Michael Baer, please present your comment.
Good evening, uh, Chair and Board. I'd like to respond to Rick Hoyer's comments and some of the other comments related to, uh, supply and demand. So the tiered rates that Mr. Hoyer mentioned, um, may or may not be eliminated, they may or may not be adjusted. That would be something that your board would consider after you got the keys. There was nothing in Measure J about tiered rates. PWN, I was part of the Measure J campaign, and we were pointing to the savings related to the profits. Uh, and the majority of the, you know, there was a bunch, a bunch of savings that came having nothing to do with tiered rates. Now, also going back to what Mr. Hoyer was saying, you know, if the, the price goes down, demand goes up, and you don't have the supply. Well, basic economics say supply and demand work together to set the price. So in that event, where the price went down, and if indeed, to some extent, the, the demand will go up, but also let's remember some of these changes you've made, low-flow toilets, all this stuff, some of this, some of this lower demand is, is baked in already, and so may not go up as much. But regardless, if the demand goes up and the supply is restricted, the cost will go up, and the demand will go back down. That's what I learned in my economics class. And then, you know, uh, in terms of what Mr. Rowley said, he seemed to be talking about, you know, the next agenda item, that somehow they should be together. I, you know, the nuts and bolts of taking over the company, I think, are quite complicated. I think, are quite complicated. But basically, I don't see how they relate to Environmental Quality Act, Environmental Review. It's entirely appropriate that these are two separate documents. I look forward to the discussion on that one next. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Fred, please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, Board. My name is Fred Muir. I'm the chairman of the Monterey Bay Defense Alliance. My key issue remains that the district develop a new water supply that is responsive to the military's current and potentially future mission needs and is resilient to drought. For the following reasons, I am concerned that this will not be achieved. You have an AIR before you that fails to adequately address how lower water rates promised by Measure J will likely lead to increased consumption. Add to that the recent supplies required to get off. The river chart distributed by your general manager shows that the existing supply already falls short of existing demand. The supply depends on unrealistic assumption that ASR will reliably produce 1,300 acre feet every year. The probable increase demand due to the expected lower rates must be addressed in the EIR just as you address the high cost of water being a reason that you don't have expanded demand in the future. The EIR also claims no impact due to change in ownership because operations will not change, yet your operation plans describe the number of significant changes that you would make in operations. Both cannot be true. The bottom line is that the EIR is inadequate. Your agency's continued efforts to not support a realistic and adequate new supply to lift the CDO could cause a risk to our military missions and the $2 billion part of our economy that is far more important today than it was yesterday. The other, I call it common sense thing that bothers me is that the district focus, I think, should be a new adequate water supply, not a water supply that is measured in teaspoons of accuracy. We know that the agency is against the D-SAL plan. It doesn't make sense to me from common sense that you're using an EIR to evaluate an action that you know you're doing everything you can to prevent from happening. The EIR should address a project in the future operated as you think you're going to operate it, not as your actions are showing you don't want to operate. So please go after a water supply that is resilient to drought now, not till 2034, and that will meet the needs of our communities for workforce housing and meet the needs for our business for housing that is much closer to the jobs than they currently have. Thank you.
Okay.
I see no other raised hands, Chair Edwards. Let's see, I see someone who is trying. Okay, I do have another speaker, just a moment. John Tilly, please present your comment. John Tilly.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. John Tilly, I'm the co-chair of the Coalition of Peninsula Businesses. I'm also on the Citizens Oversight Committee of the Water District, the 152 Committee. When the cities were asked for responses around the demand and supply report, they came back and asked that third-party verification be put in place, and that did not happen. So just to say that, yes, you did receive responses from the city isn't really sufficient. You know, these are local officials and they were not given the information they wanted. So the demand and supply report simply ignored that. There's clearly strong demand for housing on the peninsula as demonstrated by the cost of housing here, and that should be really recognized in the demand and supply report. Looking at the cease and desist order, it is clear supply requires a great amount of focus because we will be forced to reduce the damage being done to the Carmel River. I simply urge our board members to let water supply at least be on equal footing as Measure J so that if we don't end up with water rushing and insufficient water supply projects, such as not having the D-SAL plant. The supply side of the demand and supply report assumes we have rainfall and public water now is, Pure Water Monterey is a success, which has not yet been the case. And it's also assuming that expansion works, which is not, you know, clearly the case. Phase one isn't even working yet. It's hard to say that when you look at a table of supply that's provided to us by the district and we see that the various entries maximize the production and assume perfect success, which has not yet been achieved, that there should be concern. We should all be concerned that a house of cards is in place that will cost us millions to support and is 100% dependent upon rainfall. Pretending we don't live in a semi-arid environment that repeatedly suffers drought is unacceptable. I urge you to provide as clear a focus on water supply as you provide to Measure J. We need that. This house of cards is very concerning. It's being built and should cause alarm for all of us because we will have droughts. Thank you very much.
Melody Chrislock, please present your comment.
Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. I just want to address what seems to be a real misunderstanding out there in the hospitality and glitter section of the world. During the entire time that Measure J was being devised and promoted, there was never once any discussion of limiting growth or development. Public ownership never conceived in order to push, push to control or restrain development. It never happened. George Riley and I never had a conversation like that. Ron Cohen and George Riley never had a conversation like that. We simply knew that public ownership of water would lower rates for the peninsula and give us local control over our water supply rather than having an investor-owned utility with not having our company's real benefit in mind control our water future. So for the record, this is just a ridiculous idea. It never happened. It's not part of what Measure J was about. Public Water Now has never promoted restraint on development or growth. We recognize the Water Management's District's Supply and Demand Report that gives this peninsula plenty of water for 30 years of growth. So what I really wonder is why hospitality, real estate can't get behind that and want that water now instead of waiting years for CalAM's D-SAL? That's a fantasy. That D-SAL plant is not likely to ever be built. But Pure Water Monterey, the expansion is right there. And phase one is working well. The problems are being quickly solved. So there's no real reason not to support the expansion. And if you think that's going to limit any kind of growth or development, just you're wrong. That is not the case. Also, one thing about recycled water, it is not rainfall-dependent. Recycled water is considered drought-proof because it comes from indoor water. If you get a drought, what you limit is outdoor watering. Thank you.
You. Amy Anderson, please present your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Melody, for covering a number of the things that I was going to talk about. But I want to get back to what's on the table right now, and that is this CECL report, which, as the general manager said, wasn't even required. But it's just about the acquisition of those two regions, and nothing would change except for who might own the system that's delivering, whoever's delivering the water. It's the same amount of water. It's the same people. It's not any new connections. So that seems pretty straightforward. It's not about the water supply. The water supply for something other than this issue. This issue is not about the water supply, the CECL. The water supply has been discussed, you know, continually is being discussed. And right now, the D-SAL project, the potential D-SAL project is not even on the table when we're talking about this particular item. Measure J, we're on the train of Measure J. It required this work be done because it was found to be feasible. Public water was found to be feasible, and so this is just the next step. You know, the train has left the station and it's going from step to step to step, and that was required by Measure J. It has nothing to do with the water supply itself. That is being worked on separately. So I don't understand why people are saying that we should only do the water supply first. We can, you know, skip and rub our stomach. We can do more than one thing at once. And that's what's happening here. The water supply is being dealt with separately. This is just about this annexation and moving forward on what was required by Measure J. Thank you.
Marley Melton, please present your comment.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you. This has been a long time coming and it's so good to see progress on complying with Measure J. Majority of voters in Carmel Valley and Carmel voted yes on Jan. I really want to thank all the people that worked so hard to make it possible. So I hope the project does go forward and at this step, the EIR will be approved. I was impressed by how detailed and thorough the EIR is and the many different areas that it's addressed and the finding that there were no environmental impacts except those that could be mitigated. I also read the comments and I admired the courtesy and the extensive detail and the occasional polite but rather firm nature of the responses. I thought those were very good. As an economist, I especially appreciate the fact that a multitude of factors, once you get beyond Econ 1, determine demand in addition to price, especially in heavy-regulated and non-competitive industries such as water. And I understand that you, as a board, can approve or not tiered rates and adjust them as you think best, but that that is not part of an environmental impact or necessarily anything that needs to be considered at this time. Also, I understand that other entities besides the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District will decide the future of the various projects being proposed as part of economic growth. I also want to emphasize that Measure J says nothing to prohibit economic growth. It's very much in favor of a prosperous and thriving community. So please approve the EIR. We are not a special interest. We're just ordinary people who have noticed that 86% of Californians have a local organization supplying their water in a nonprofit way, and they seem to be doing quite well. So please say yes to this EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Eric Tyne, please present your comment.
Good evening, folks. Eric Tyne with the Castroville Community Services District. I find it kind of curious when some of the people, like Carmel, talking about not wanting growth and everything. Castroville, right now, you've got a 68-unit armorer housing proposed. You just put in a, Mr. Stone just came out and dedicated a 52-unit affordable housing. We've got Sonora Court, another 58 houses. Castroville's taken a big load of, for the employees. A lot of them do work on the peninsula. I know some will work over Pebble Beach. They are driving up and down the road there. It'd be nice to add affordable housing there. I think we'd have a lot less angst about this if, you know, like Carmel sends its wastewater to Pebble Beach, the golf course. Doesn't go to their housing or affordable housing. Instead, they want to take stuff and... Just for example, the Monterey One Water was supposed to be doing 29 million gallons a day. It's only doing about 18 right now. So the Monterey County Water Resource Agency just protested any additional water for the expansion. City of Salinas is also having reservations and opposing its permits for any kind of water for that. The only problem with the detail is people keep trying to throw log jams in front of it. It's almost, it's got all this permit. This thing, the expansion, you're going to go back to the CPUC and they're not going to be real friendly right now. You have to go back to the State Board, you're going to need a permit. You're going to have to get additional EDLs for the discharge. There's a whole lot to it. It's that thing's just starting right back at the beginning. It's what has happened a lot on the peninsula where people keep on reinventing the wheel right when they get to the finish line. D-SAL, yes, Castroville is pleaded with to take on this in order to help the peninsula solve a 26-year problem. So you've got 26 years, you get affordable housing, and the talk of, oh, we're not against growth. I don't buy it. If they want to see growth, they can come out to Castroville and live with us. We'd be more than happy to take them. But I really think, I think twice about this, the D-SAL would be, if everybody just listened to the three-legged stool and did what was proposed and all the studies and all the money and all the time and effort, this would have been solved. But this is just another attempt to limit the water supply so, you know, people can take it over, people can move over in Castroville if they want to work on the peninsula. But anyways, we appreciate the work you're doing. I know everybody has strong opinions about this and I just want to thank you for your time. Good luck with your decision.
Thank you, sir.
Susan Skivoni, please present your comment.
Good evening, Board. I do want to thank Amy for bringing people's discussion back to the actual subject of the night, which is the EIR, which really does have nothing to do with this argument about water supply. The EIR is a document about purchasing a system as it is. And it seems to me like the management plan is, what are you going to do after you buy it? And frankly, I was really happy to read parts of it. I couldn't read all of it, but when I went to the strategic goals, I was really pleased to see that you were making water quality a big priority and customer satisfaction. And that's one of the reasons, or two of the reasons, that I think a public water agency is where we ought to head, and I'm glad we're heading in that direction. And I do hope you will approve this EIR, which was done primarily because of LAFCO. And I believe the management plan is required by LAFCO, if I'm not mistaken. So I think it's great and you've done such hard and good work. And thank you. So I hope to see this go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Yes, I'd like to say that, first of all, please go ahead and certify the EIR. This has nothing to do with the supply of water. It has to do who owns and who has jurisdiction over it, and it's the public. Things are going to work out based on what the public wants and needs in the future. And we have a terrific management company in the Water District Board. So I also, in Southern California, they have dismissed having desalination plant for their water supply. In fact, to address water shortage and to create a continuous supply of new water, all of Southern California has been developing and implementing large water recycle projects. water recycle projects. In fact, the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California has become the largest distributor of purified wastewater in the United States. And its mission statement says that the recycle water program works because it uses region's largest untapped source of treated wastewater, otherwise sent to the ocean, produces a dry-proof source of water, readily available, rain or shine, replenishes groundwater basins, helps meet the needs of the region's growing economy and population at a cost that is comparable to other local water sources, helps ensures regional water reliability through diversifying sources in combination with water conservation practices and water banking. As far as water banking, the Irvine Ranch Water District has entered into a 30-year water banking partnership with Rosedale Rio Grab Water Storage District. It has all kinds of different projects going on to create banking for water. And so, and we're going to be able to use all the water instead of sending it to the ocean after a single use. That is the worst thing that we can do about protecting our water, our environment, and to have a sustainable water. But anyhow, this is based on who's going to be managing our water supply. And we don't want it to have a corporation, a monopoly dictating what we need to do for, it's best for our community. Thank you very much for your consideration. Please go ahead and approve, certify the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rudy Fisher, please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. You know, the public water could keep saying that this has nothing to do with water supply. What's exactly the problem? You know, I worry about this agenda item because you're about to go down a very expensive road that does not get us to the destination of having more water. For over 40 years, the MBWMD has had several goals: to increase the water supply to meet community and environmental needs, to assist California Mission Water and Global Water Supply, to protect the quality of storage and groundwater resources, to restore the turnover, to manage and allocate available water supplies and control conservation, and only with the passage of Measure J to evaluate the feasibility of acquiring the local water company. The state put us under a CDO because after 42 years, we have still not met those other goals. I'd like to see us achieve all of those goals, but Measure J was only added in 2018. Those other goals have been there for years, decades actually, and only now are within any short sort of range of actually accomplishing them. I know that some of the current board are emotionally and ideologically predisposed to going after the water, no matter what. But I hope you're operational. Can we afford it and can we actually operate it? I feel that this report leaves some doubt about that. But in my mind, the number one goal of this agency has to be to get us off of the CDO. How does this action do that? It doesn't. And anyone pursuing this action is failing in their job. Taking over CalAM does not create one new and additional drop of water. And that is your job, or could be, to find ways to create more water so we can get off the CDO. We can do that with our CalAM, and that should be the number one priority. Developing more water, we can get off the CDO, we can operate in this county in the same way that pretty much the whole country, indeed the whole world operates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands. And I would request that everyone who has spoken would please disable their raised hand.
Okay, Arlene.
Thank you.
We're going to close. Public hearing. General Counsel, General Manager, do you have any comments after the public has spoken?
Yeah, a few brief ones.
Okay, go ahead.
There was a statement made that public agencies cannot do tiers. We can do tiers. There's a level of evidence that needs to be produced to support tiered rates, but they're still in the purview of public agencies. Those who've tried to tie statements from the operating plans into this EIR, I just want to reiterate what I said at the outset, that the goal is to run it the way it is currently run and observe it as a new owner. If after a year, we see things that are either a provision of a service, an operation, or a decided goal for level of service, then just as any owner, we might change it in the future. But as of right now, the best outcome would be absorb the company and its employees and run the system as currently run. And that's the goal. There was a mention twice about, we need housing. Obviously, as many speakers said, we're not relitigating the water supply EIRs. But I can tell you that the supply and demand upon which the district looks at water projects includes water for housing and the expectation of increased population on the peninsula and accommodation for the regional housing needs allocation. Mr. Rowley made a comment about the call center being in Alton, Illinois or Florida. And he is right. And when Megan Jones earlier mentioned the differential in employees and net six differential, that was factored into greenhouse gases. And that net six includes bringing the billing function here locally as opposed to national Dropbox billing programs. And it assumes that we bring the call center here locally, as well as some financial support for the billing and collection of revenues, net of, you know, a couple of positions. So that those have been factored into the EIR. And then finally, Mr. Tilly said that the district's supply and demand study, which really shouldn't be the subject of discussion on this item anyway, that the city managers requested a third-party verification. It has been third-party verified, but it was not the city managers who went out and hired somebody as they initially stated they would do. But there have been outside third-party organizations not solicited by the Water Management District who have reviewed it and issued commentary on it. The remainder, you know, we addressed the lower rates. There's a section in, I believe it's section 4-3 of the EIR that deals with the speculative nature of trying to define the impact on rates. But certainly, the statement that was made that rate setting is not subject to CEQA is what we've been instructed as well. So I'm sure that when and if there's a first revision to a rate structure under public ownership, that some of those issues may percolate back up to the surface. But they were not deemed to be necessary to be analyzed for this purpose.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add just a couple points. I know several of the speakers commented that evaluating the acquisition of CalAM is a more recent goal and that this differs from some of the longstanding goals. And I just want to remind the public and this board that this effort is required by voter initiative. This district does not have a choice in embarking upon this evaluation. The voters did require that. With respect to the operations plan, I also want to point out that it is a conceptual document in the sense that the district does not presently have access to CalAM facilities. And so it has to make certain projections and assumptions as to what those existing operations are. And that's what's in this operations plan. But the operations plan is a concept. We're not asking that the board adopt that tonight. That was part of the original agenda action that we're going to be taking in the next item. But that recommendation, as Mr. Stolt referenced, is changed. So the EIR does not incorporate a firm operations plan. It's a conceptual plan at this point. And I think the EIR properly characterized the scope of the activity before you. And I believe that it's sufficient for you to consider for certification. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager, General Counsel. Board members, do you have any questions before we move on? Okay, I have a couple of them. Okay, go ahead, Director Ralph.
I have a single question directed to Dave or Dave, two Daves. After a filing, after submission made to LAFCO, are we in any position to file amended comments, just based on whatever may develop over the next few months, that may have some impact on what we've already submitted? Or do we have the discretion to add comments after this submission?
If I could address that first, and then Dave, you could jump in. The LAFCO process, it's an application, and then there will be a hearing. The district does have the opportunity to present evidence to LAFCO on the hearing. And so as matters do develop and change, the district can respond to that and provide the evidence to LAFCO. In terms of the EIR, the EIR, if, the hearing will not be held without a certified EIR. So the EIR is going to be certified. If there's new information that has substantial change, then we'd have to follow the CEQA process to issue an addendum, a supplement, or further EIR. So that is a fixed component. But with respect to the information that goes to LAFCO, we can supplement that information responding to their questions and issues as we go along.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just have some issues. And these really aren't questions. These are just the issues I have as I went through this. So if you want me to just read through them, on 2.5, the operations and maintenance, I don't think it really addresses what the difference is between a stranded asset and how that gets handled. 2.6, objectives. One of the main focuses, objectives, is the cost effectiveness. And I don't know that that's really stated in here. And some of these issues are maybe not environmental, but they're brought up in this document. So therefore, they are substantial. 3.2.2, the cumulative setting, the Pacific Grove settings were done in Arata. But as Director Evans brought out, there were other ones that were missing. 4.6-1, that chart are not, some of the demands are not the actual, they're presented as the basis for it, the optimal numbers, such as the San City D cell plant. 5.1.1, economics, the goal is, well, it says that there would be no increase in population. However, lower rates could cause more population due to more housing. 5.1.2, it's talking about the expansion of the water system, and it really doesn't address the fact that there is the option for D cell and pure water Monterey expansion. 6.4.3.2, again, I don't think that was a very good answer on the local domicile employees. And 6.4.4.1, it's hard to say that the third-party alternative would be a greater difference than CalAM as far as how it's run or how expensive it is. Those are just my comments. I don't need answers to those. Those are things that I see are issues with the CIR.
Director Byrne, can you hit the highlights between 5.1.1 and 6.4.4.1, again, sections?
6.1.1, it said there would be no impact on the population, lower rates would have no impact on the population. But in fact, that could or could not be true. Lower rates do tend to encourage people to do more housing. 5.1.2, it talks about that there are no proposed expansions of the water system, when in fact, there is the D cell and the pure water Monterey expansion. 6.4.3.2, again, is that the employees would be locally domiciled. And I don't think that was a very good answer because part of the traffic problem is Highway 68 are coming in on Highway 1. And 6.4.4.1, to me, the third-party would not be a dramatic savings over having CalAM. We already have a third-party running this system. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions?
Director Edwards, if I may?
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Similar to Director Byrne, it's not a question as much as a comment, if I may, in the form of a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the EIR claims that there's no change in operation. I addressed the EIR and the EIR references the operations plan. Yet if you look at page 76 of Exhibit 3-A, it says specifically that the goal is to reduce contaminant levels to non-detectable levels in water delivered to customers. That is not how water systems are operated. They do not reduce contaminants to non-detect levels for all contaminants. So in fact, what the EIR is stating is that they would definitely change the operation of the water system and actually increase the cost. Because if you're going to reduce contaminant levels to non-detect, then that is much more expensive. Nobody does it. And so that is a disconnect between EIR and the ops plan. And as long as the EIR references the ops plan, regardless of what the plan is for the next agenda item, as long as it's referenced in the EIR, this claim of no change in operation just isn't true. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question from board members? Okay, Director Rowley?
I move approval of the staff recommendation to approve Resolution 2020-17 certifying the EIR.
Do you have a second for discussion?
I'll second it.
Well, I'll let you, Director Potter.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask if the motion to approve includes the findings?
Yes, the full recommendation to include the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Second, Director Potter?
Yep.
Okay, under discussion, just a couple of, Mr. Laredo, would we have a problem approving this with those comments from the Vice Chair and Director Hoffman?
From what I've heard from our consultant, from our General Manager, I don't believe those are fundamental flaws sufficient to allow you to take this action.
Okay, and another one. CalAM sent a letter to the district, or whatever that was that they sent. Do we have a problem with that letter that was sent?
My assessment of that letter is that it mainly addresses the issues with respect to the operations plan. And as noted by Mr. Stolt, and I've mentioned before, our recommendation on the operations plan is modified. And I believe that that is not a fundamental flaw. The statement is, is that the intention is to acquire the system and to continue to operate it without change. And that's the fundamental premise behind this EIR. I think that the letter assumes there's going to be operational changes, and that is not the direction that my understanding that your board has directed and will be directing.
Last question is this. Not having all those projects in there. Not having all those projects in there, do we have to recirculate or should we recirculate or do an addendum to that to get all these projects that these people are talking about that are missing? What's your comment on that? Your mic is off.
Thank you. I'd ask Megan Jones to correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding of her statement was that while there may be minor changes with respect to those projects that are in the pipeline, that that does not rise to a level of significance and therefore the EIR analysis is sufficient. But I would ask Ms. Jones to comment on that.
Yeah, I think you say that correctly. The cumulative list, even if we added a number of projects, just given the nature of this current project, would not change any of the conclusions in the EIR. And there's a number of, you know, sort of triggers for recirculating in EIR listed in CECL and none of those would be triggered. So a new significant environmental impact, substantial increase in severity of impact, a feasible alternative or mitigation measure considered different from others previously analyzed that were not adopted and/or the draft EIR is fundamentally flawed and potentially in nature. So those are the sort of triggers and add projects to the cumulative list, but no other section can.
Thank you. Any more comments on discussion before I call for the roll call vote?
As a second or Mr. Chair, if I might?
Go ahead Director Potter.
So, you know, Mr. Rall is right. I have looked at a few EIRs over the course of time. One of the areas I like to look at most are under comments. Only 12 comments were received of the agencies that were responding or the public or organizations. Of those 12, only one city responded, that was San City. And they were concerned about their facility and the liability issues associated. The most telling part of it was of the 83 pages in their entirety. Forty-four pages were consumed by CalM in responses to CalM. So going to the original question of the adequacy of the EIR, I don't think we probably should have said that we're doing it because we didn't want to get sued, but that's not exactly the way we worded it. The fact of the matter is that it would have been foolish to go with a mitigated neg deck or even a neg deck. I mean honestly, this is what we should have been doing. This is a process we should go through. And to find out that this is, the reason why we're doing it was to make sure we wouldn't get litigated against, I find it extremely hard to believe that the way this letter reads from CalM from David Morin where it says, for the following reasons, for the foregoing reasons, the EIR is deficient as an informational document under CECL, I think that says it all. Although the answers to the questions or their allegations are very thorough. I don't think that we're going to be able to avoid any litigation. So I strongly support the process we've gone through. And one of the things that has been a bit of a waste of time tonight is this long walk down memory lane about the intent of Measure J. Why did we do Measure J? Who supported it? What was their intent? What was the devious natures? It really doesn't do any good here. We're the agency that's tasked with going ahead and dealing with the public's will to pass Measure J. That's our job. That's why we're doing this and that's what we should be doing tonight. That's why I say let's move forward. If we're going to court, we're going to court. But I would rather go ahead, move forward tonight than sit around and debate the pass and intent. I think that we're just tasked with figuring out whether the Measure J is feasible. I think we're doing a good job in that area and that's why I'm supporting the action tonight.
Thank you, sir. And quick comments on the second?
If I may, Director Edwards, please.
Go ahead Director Hoffman, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that for me, as I mentioned, the reference to the operations plan in the EIR is incongruous, regardless of the statements from the general manager and counsel. So for me, for it to certify the EIR, any reference to the operations plan needs to be omitted because clearly there are issues with the statements made in the operations plan that are inconsistent with the intent of the EIR. And so in the absence of cleaning up the EIR to make it a consistent document, for me, that's what needs to be done here. Let's do it right. Let's not anticipate litigation. If we do it right the first time, then we mitigate and minimize the opportunity for that kind of stuff to happen. Thank you.
So I have a question for David Laredo. So addressing Director Hoffman's question about the EIR referencing no change in operation, can that line be deleted and the rest of it be approved?
You have the ability to modify the document at this time. The document, the record of this session also includes the statements of your general manager and myself with respect to the nature of this. And the, I believe that the action that's going to be taken as the next item also influences what action you're taking under the EIR. So but in answer to your question, yes, you may modify that sentence or any other sentence prior to certification.
A question to Director Hoffman is, is that what he intends?
Director Byrne, for me is that I think we need to look at the resolution for the EIR. And so there's language in the resolution adopting the EIR that needs to be looked at to make sure that the issue of the ops plan is segregated from the EIR discussion. And I have, obviously I haven't had a chance to come up with alternative language or find every location in the EIR where the reference to the ops plan exists. So I think that that needs to be fleshed out and that doing it on the fly in this forum, for me, is just, doesn't do it justice. That, that's my perspective.
Just a point of clarification, again, this will be the third time I've stated it. The goal is to conform the operations plan to the statements made in the EIR, which means if we've taken a guess or a stab at something related to CalM's operations and then we discover that it is not consistent with current operations, we're going to change it in the ops plan because we don't have to adopt the operations plan for some time. And so we have that opportunity. But again, unless we know every current operation, you know, O and M protocol, there are likely things that we're suggesting that we know that we don't know. And there's nothing you can do about that. That's what happens when you're flying blind. We, you know, we've not been invited in to view the condition of the assets and we've not been invited in to see how things are run. We've not been given all of their handbooks, manuals, and protocols. So, you know, it was a great letter that Manet sent us, but it's pointless because the overarching goal, and it probably needs to be stated in the operations plans, is anything in this plan inconsistent with current operations is more aspirational than actual in that our intent is to operate as currently operated, that it's a change in ownership. As I said, as an owner, later, if we discover there is something that needs to be changed, well, CalM could do that too. You know, operations will change. But going into the purchase, the intent is to not change operations. So, you know, we're going to address it in the operations plan. To the extent there's any variation with current operations that we've miscalculated, then current operations trump what we said in the plan.
Mr. Chairman, the motion before you is to approve the document as presented.
And with that motion before us, any more comments? So Mr. Laredo, if any changes, that mean no changes will be made?
Unless there's a further motion.
Okay. Vice Chair, GM, should we take out the stuff about the operation? Or should we leave them in? Mr. Laredo, GM or Mr. Laredo?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that it's required. I believe that it's been very clear that the EIR will trump the operations plan, that the operations plan has not been approved, that it's being presented to you after this and that the concept behind the operation plan is that there will be no change in operations. And one of the reasons the operation plan is stated as it is is because we haven't been able to inspect CalM's facilities or closely analyze its existing operations. So the operations plan, if it doesn't parallel that which CalM is now doing, the operations plan is what needs to change, not the EIR. The EIR is to approve continued operation of the facilities by the public agency other than CalM.
All right, that's done. Roll call vote, please.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Byrne?
Well, even though I feel that the EIR has got some, so much isolation to it, I will vote yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
6 to 1, motion passed, thank you. GM, next item, please.
Comments that have been, oh, have I been muted that entire time?
Yes.
Oh, lucky me, yes. So this, this item, the staff recommendation, has changed to to receive the operations plans, not adopt them. And although marked final, we will treat them as drafts and will endeavor to address some of the specific comments that have been made about inconsistencies between what we've suggested in the plan and current operations and maybe include a disclaimer so that it's clear that the intent is to operate for a transitional period of time exactly as close to exactly the way current operations are, preferably with current staff and personnel, et cetera. So, so at this point, we're requesting that you change it to adoption to just receive and then we can bring it back for adoption at a point in time where it's required either for LAFCO or for the bench trial, should you choose to go that way. I do have a brief presentation, which will take very little time. So Arlene, let's go through this. So the goals in provision of service is to, you know, our preference is to integrate all or most of the CalM employees, operate in the same manner without changes initially, provide the same or better quality of service and contract operations are only an option if CalM employees are somehow not available. Next slide. So the role of the two plans, so for bench trial, you know, the three legs that we intend to stand on are that we can provide equal or better quality of service, we can reduce the overall cost of service, and there's better governance and public access transparency and things like that. So operations plan serves one of the goals that we have at the bench trial. And then under LAFCO, yes, it was mentioned earlier, there is a specific, go ahead Arlene, a specific request for a plan for providing services. And so that's what this will serve as a role in a LAFCO application. We're trying to get that application all buttoned up in the next two to four weeks and submit it. They will schedule a hearing in the spring. If it's controversial, there may be a two-hearing process. But, you know, clearly we need to demonstrate sufficient knowledge in utility operations that it can be construed that we can either hire and manage the operations team or outsource an operations team and that we know enough about utility management to do so. I think these plans do demonstrate that in their current form. But as I said, if you just vote to receive it, we'll continue and endeavor to kind of clean up a few of the things that have just recently been raised. That concludes my presentation.
Any more questions? Go ahead Director Rall.
Dave, I have some questions about the plan. What kind of process might there be if we have some questions on when things are explained or maybe some things that seem to be more significant than treated? Just any of our comments, what's the process?
Yeah, so as I said, you know, the first need for this is LAFCO. You know, we'd like to get in a fairly complete application when we submit it. So I would say let's set up a call and we can just go through item by item.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead Director.
Thank you. Dave, does that mean there'll be some sort of an appendix where we will be able to view all of the different comments or suggestions that have been made if you're going to do it that way?
Yeah, or we could just issue a redline version so you can see where changes were made. Or if a comment was not addressed, then we can include that separately as, you know, comments not addressed in the changes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is Director Evans.
Go ahead Director Evans.
I just want to say that I would appreciate the redline version to see what other comments have been made and how they've been incorporated in it. So, thank you.
Any other, Director Potter, any question?
So Dave, what do you think the process looks like in actually figuring out what some of these operational secrets are?
Yeah, yeah, well, so a couple of things happen. If this board elects to go forward with a condemnation action, once we're in the courts, you've got rights of discovery. We will be able to schedule visits to all the assets. Unless we know what to ask, some of the knowledge won't be revealed. But, you know, certain protocols and handbooks and things like that are things that can be discovered through the legal process. So that wouldn't happen until, you know, the board decides to go forward with it and the board will, you know, still be flying in the dark a little bit prior to that. I mean, this is kind of the best we can do in saying, you know, here's what a utility should be looking at. The one comfort level we have is both sets of consultants came to a lot of the same conclusions that, you know, this is important, this is important, this is important, this is important. Yeah, so, you know, I think we're on the right path, but, you know, we're not going to have a whole lot of knowledge going into the decision to proceed.
So I guess continuing as a question, I'd be interested in knowing how we're going to go ahead and determine the value, the condition and the life expectancy of some of the assets that are there, especially some of the utilities that we can't actually see that could affect the general cost of the operations of the organization.
Yeah, great, great question. Probably not currently the right forum, but there's going to be condition-based assessments that will ultimately come up. You know, a pipe that has a 50-year life and it's already been fully depreciated, you know, chances are they'll come up with a foot-long section out of the ground and say, look how good this is, it's got another 25 years left. Our financial consultants have done the same methodology that, remember that appraisal that came out during the campaign? There was a, you know, an asset-based, cost-based methodology. Our guys have applied the same. Our guys have applied the same methodology using a lot of the same information. And so there is information out there, uh, done through rate cases and other filings that, that we've gotten our hands on. So, you know, we'll, we'll have a pretty good sense of evaluation. But ultimately, you know, you, right now, we, if Dcel stays in limbo, you don't even know if you're buying the design-build plans for a project that's moving forward, which has some value, or if you're not. So there are some things that you're going to take on face value at the time you make the decision whether you want to move forward or not, that, uh, you know, the, if you get past the bench trial, you get to a jury, jury trial and valuation. And so those numbers may in fact change. But, you know, our guys that we have doing it are following MAI, you know, the American Society of Appraisers, uh, standards. They've got the respect of our eminent domain attorneys. They lecture on this, this stuff. So I think we'll have a pretty good number, um, when it comes to you.
Is there, is there a point, is there a point in time when somebody puts the brakes on the possibilities of escalating the cost of the asset, the value of the asset?
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge, um, exposure that you would have if you choose to move forward and you get into court and, uh, you get through the bench trial and you don't like the number that comes out of the jury trial. And trust me, you take that number, you plug it back into the cost of service models and see if you still have savings. Because if you don't, you've just kind of blown up your whole premise that, you know, it's financially feasible. If you stop the process at that point in time and say, oh, here, Cal-Am, keep, keep the keys to the car, we don't want it. That's the, you know, we'll pay their legal fees, we'll pay our legal fees, and those will be some big numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was just curious.
Director Hoffman, you have any questions?
Uh, no, sir, I'll wait for comments, thank you.
All right, Vice Chair, any questions? No questions? All right, Arlene, let's take it out to the public, please, three minutes.
Arlene, your agenda is? I apologize, all right. Mr. Sana, please present your comment.
Uh, thank you, George Sana, counsel for Cal-Am again. Well, I've seen these before. This is a 143-page document, this operations plan that is largely taken verbatim from a series of AWWA, American Water Works Association manuals. It plugs these standards out and puts them forth as district operating plan. Many of them are idealistic, not feasible, not appropriate for the Monterey water system. One example, just among many, is the dry barrel hydrants, which are used in the, on the east coast in places where trees, that's your plan here, has, uh, using those throughout, uh, the Monterey water system. The change now that's been made here is to receive it rather than adopt. And what's on the agenda tonight is adoption. I don't know what receipt is, but presumably, uh, the district intends to tell LAFCO, receive this, but it's not really its plan. Uh, this is, uh, AWWA standards that have been cobbled together, but don't confuse this with an adopted plan, I'm best known to say. And that's a short way of saying, I don't think this makes any sense whatsoever to, uh, you know, receive this and submit it to LAFCO. But as we noted, uh, the operations plan commits the district to a number of details that are certainly to be costly and represent a change in water system operations. Uh, the plan required storage tanks must have the ability to refill the entire pressure zone within eight hours to have the tanks full at the start of the next day. Um, and this, this type of change is preliminary, is going to require, require an upgrade of the entire pipeline in Carmel, the upper, at least a 48-inch diameter water main, uh, to handle that flow. So I understand this is designed just to get you to LAFCO, but I do not think that, that the district has properly noticed a, a, a motion to just receive the plan tonight. That was not on the agenda. And I don't think that this sort of plan is an operations plan, uh, albeit, uh, many of the things are adopted by AW. Thank you.
Sir.
Tom Rowley, please present your comment.
Uh, good evening again, uh, Tom Rowley. Uh, I want to correct, I was finally able to get onto the, um, uh, AMP channel and, uh, so was able to see everybody's face except for, uh, Attorney Laredo is kind of, his face does not show up, it's too dark. So you might want to get a better camera angle to crucial visibility. After that comment, I do want to go back to a remark, uh, I think was pointed out that, uh, the items like, uh, that were analyzed on the EIR on greenhouse gases, uh, similarly, there is a lot in both plans that are part of this art staff item, uh, our boilerplate that are not relevant to the Monterey water system. One of the things that is a given, that leaps out, is the, uh, supply and demand data, or the demand and supply data that's provided by the general manager that has not gone through the rigors of an EIR analysis as the analysis of water demand that was in the EIR for the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project. Quite frankly, it's a house of cards when you start seeing, uh, data that says you're going to have 1,300 acre feet of aqua for storage and recovery for a year in this climate. Uh, it was pointed out by Mr. Tilly earlier that that is basing your plan, this operation plan, on a house of cards. So the thing is, when you start with bad data, you're going to wind up with a bad report. If you start with bad information, you're going to have an inaccurate report. I, I did, uh, you know, as I mentioned, much of this is boilerplate. It looks like it was not given a good edit. It was published like on the, well, I received it on the Friday before the Monday meeting. It was rushed to get it out. And if nothing else, it needs to be edited and refined and made appropriate for presentation, for even being received. It has got too many inaccuracies and just general baloney and not really pertinent information. So I make that suggestion, too much has gone into your whole process just to have sloppy work at this stage of the game. LAFCO doesn't deserve it. The pro, whole procedure that's being funded basically by the water ratepayers and the taxpayers don't deserve, quite frankly, documents like these two alternate plans that are just inadequate and faulty. So thank you very much.
You? Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Good evening again. Gee, if you don't know what's going on because Cal-Am won't share and the lawyer then, you know, criticizes, uh, the deficiencies, you know, that doesn't seem fair. Maybe Cal-Am should consider sharing. But I don't anticipate that they will. Um, I'm really interested in deferred maintenance. I think that is an issue that we have very little idea on. And the quality of the infrastructure is completely unknown. You know, put in a $52 million, 36-inch pipe across the, uh, community, which, uh, is too big to have enough pressure to move the water. Um, and, you know, maybe have some upgrades. But as Mr. Stolt said, you know, they can take you over and show you the best parts, the parts that have been replaced in the last five years. And, uh, remember, this is, it's over 100 years old. And so I just want to reflect back, uh, PWN, once again, had, uh, had Missoula, Montana, which acquired, um, public buyout of a private system. And, um, they did go to court and they did get discovery and they got to see some atrocious, um, uh, infrastructure that had been painted over to look good. And so what I'm suggesting is that you may not have to go to court because, uh, because of discovery. And then, uh, you know, Cal-Am may be bluffing. And, uh, if the system is crap or major parts of the system, uh, they may just want to, you know, take their 200 million and be satisfied in each town. It happened in, it didn't, I mean, Missoula, they did go to court, but many others, uh, private agencies settle on the courtroom steps because they're afraid to show what's really going on. They, they're afraid of discovery. And so I just want to plant that seed in board's minds. That, uh, you know, Cal-Am may be afraid of discovery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. Uh, back to the board. Motion, comments, questions?
Director, let, let me give you something before, before you have your conversation.
Okay, excuse me, uh, GM and General Counsel, you have the floor.
Yeah, earlier this year, we, uh, talked at length about the difference between received, approved and accepted, or, I'm sorry, accepted and adopted. The conclusion we came to is that when a report is given or when a report is even part of, back, back part of the packet, it is received. So by taking no action on this action item, you still have received the reports. At some point, we will want them adopted. And that will be when we come back with red line versions and so forth. Um, I do take exception to Mr. Rowley suggesting that these were poorly drafted and a bunch of baloney. The, the two firms that have worked on this and produced, uh, majority of the utility-related sections, have done an exemplary job, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Rowley made the comment about, um, the lighting, uh, that maybe because of the witness protection program that I'm in. I, I will make sure that my lighting is better the next, uh, for the next meeting. So my apologies to all on, uh, uh, Mr. Sana, uh, made the comment that this is on the agenda for adoption and that's accurate. But I do believe that receipt of the document is a subset of the adoption. So I do believe that this is properly before you, you may properly act to receive it. And as Mr. Stolt mentioned, you don't even have to act because by holding this meeting, you have in fact received it. And, and commenting further on, 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 uh, Mr. Sana, yes, eventually, your board will need to provide direction on an operations plan and it's the appropriate plan for you to direct us on. Uh, but it's, that's not where we are tonight.
Thank you, General Manager, General Counsel. Uh, Director Rowley, you have your hand up, go ahead. You on milk?
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to just comment that, uh, I, I think this board has been proactive for the last few years and maybe for the last 10 years around water supply. I think just being passive to accept the report is kind of being a little chicken. Um, I would like to just move, approve, uh, move, uh, acceptance, acceptance of the report or I move receipt of the report so that it's a proactive action of our board, uh, to acknowledge its, uh, its existence. I move, I move acceptance of, uh, what, what, what's the language? I move receipt of the report.
Receipt, thank you.
I'll second that since you're trying to get us in trouble.
So I'm just, Mr. Chair, if I might, under clarification?
Go ahead.
Just clarifying the motion, so that's receipt of a draft, a preliminary draft report? Isn't that what Mr. Stolt suggested earlier on? That it best be a draft?
Mr. Potter, you are correct.
All right, is that included in the motion?
Yes, it is, from the second.
Yeah, and me too, I agree.
Well, listen, thank you.
Okay, comments? Uh, I know you want to go last, Director Hoffman.
I guess so, Rowley.
I'll be last, but you go up before me, so, uh...
Okay, okay.
Who want to go first there? Vice Chair, any comments? Okay, Director Rowley, any more comments? Okay, uh, Director Evans, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, no, I, I thought the plans were pretty well done out. I appreciate the opportunity to make some, uh, further adjustments to them as we go through and we learn things. Um, so I, I'm, I'm behind the motion to receive it as a draft report.
Director Adams, any comments?
My comment is that I as well am happy that we are receiving the report. I know that we'll have the opportunity, uh, and to see it after we have the red line and we can make a fine, final decision and accept it at that point or not. So, um, I'm happy with the, the, uh, the way this has been determined.
Potter, any more comments from you?
I got the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Director Hoffman, you can go ahead now.
Thank you, Chair. So I really appreciate the fact that this document's only being received and not being adopted. It's a good, um, initial step, a framework. But I want to bring to the attention of the board, section five, which is a section called strategic goals and level of service standards. So I think that the board may want to consider eliminating this of an operations plan because if you, if the board adopts the plan with this section, it commits the board to 10 strategic goals. And so I think that, um, strategic goals should be addressed separately under strategic planning for the district and not be hidden into a operations plan so that later, others can come back and say, oh, well, you approved the strategic goal in the operations plan. So I would just suggest that including strategic goals in an operations plan is not the correct forum at which the board should address strategic goals. But again, I'll say that, um, this is a decent, um, initial draft. There's problems with, I think with the, I, I question many of the assumptions, but it's, it's good to know that this is only draft and we have plenty of time, um, in the process to, you know, resolve all of the nuances and get a good operations plan at the end of the process. So, uh, again, I'm very pleased that we're only receiving it and that there's plenty of opportunity. But again, addressing strategic goals in an operations plan, a bad idea. Thank you.
Chair Edwards, if I might?
Yes, go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you, Director Hoffman, for bringing that up. That is very, it's a very good point. Um, and I, I think that's something that the board and the GM should take into consideration. It's a great suggestion, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I would agree with that and I thank, um, Director Hoffman for bringing that up.
And my final comment is I want to thank the, the consultants for both of those items, the EIR and this operation plan. I know they've been in the works for a long time. And I, I want to thank the board for giving us a little bit more time to look at. And the decision that you came up with, GM, about receiving this report, this draft report, is a good idea because it's going to come back to the board for final approval. I want to thank you for all your hard work and you and the General Counsel for all their hard work, their damn put into this. It's not done yet. So I'm going to call for the roll call vote before I get in trouble.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Hello, mute.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Seven zero, motion. GM, any more, anything else tonight?
No, that is it. A couple of you will be getting emails from me to clarify some situations we had from documents, but other than that, I know we're set.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the board, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, good weekend, be safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Arlene, Sarah, everyone.
Thanks, guys.